Okay. We'll start the meeting or the roll call. Dennis, you're gonna do that?
Yep, thanks, guys. Ms. Pacora. Ms. Geary. Ms. Nance.
Here.
Mr. Conyer. Mr. McCarthy. Mr. Proctor. Ms. Lanzetta or Mr.?
I'm here for Cindy tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brand. Mr. Calamano.
I'm present.
Mr. Bajis.
Here.
Mr. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Baden. Mr. Baden. Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Hovarty.
Here.
Ms. Walton Welton.
Here.
Mr. Watkins. Mr. Armquist.
Here.
Mr. Markowitz.
Here.
Attaboy, Vic. Mr. Rudikoff.
Here.
Ms. Weiner.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Here.
Mr. Bonavita Goldman. Mr. Gargliari.
Here.
And Mr. McCarthy just joined.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. McCarthy just joined. One, two. We have a quorum.
Okay. Let's see, Rox, hands up. Also.
I see that. Thank you.
Okay. Approval of the minutes.
Tom Wilkin, so move.
Second, Vivian.
Okay. Any discussion? All those opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay. Minutes are approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Vince.
At this point in the meeting, I want to announce to my colleagues that one of our former colleagues, who previously served on this board, I actually succeeded her. If anybody remembers Suzanne Fredericks, represented the Velgesorries. She passed back on August 8. Previously, she had a lung transplant and they only expected her to live five years. Fortunately, she lived 15, but unfortunately, she, you know, she didn't make it. And she passed on August 8. Her funeral was already had. So I moved that the board observe a moment of silence and remembrance of Suzanne. And perhaps the board send a sympathy card to the family. I'll provide the address to the, to Dennis or Rob.
Second, Vivian Welton.
Do we lose Mike?
No, Mike's here. Okay, ready? Let me move along to item three, education and training opportunities.
So I have an announcement for education and training. We were reached out by, had a long conversation with one of the fellows, AICP fellows from Barton Le Judas, has offered to provide training for us. So we talked, discussed another number of topics. And one of the things that we wanted to, we wanted to talk about, and it goes back to some of the work that we're doing with our housing. It's called using design and density to preserve rural character, enhance downtown and hamlets. So we've scheduled that training. It'll be a Zoom class. We scheduled that training for September 30. At seven o'clock, it'll run from seven to eight thirty. Be one point five hours of training credits. And Barton Le Judas will send us, will send us the, some of the CVs for these, for their folks that are going to present. And we'll send the save the date out by tomorrow, I think. Mary Ann's got to save the date ready to go out by tomorrow. So if you can pass that on to your local boards. Well, we may do it by an e-vite. Robert, we haven't had a chance to talk.
No, we actually already have, Dennis, if you go to our main county planning page, there's a registration link. Already on our main page and under our agenda page for tonight's meeting.
So Mary Ann's already taken care of it.
You're all set. You can register for it right now.
Okay, that's great. So we'll, we'll send that out with the registration link and hopefully we'll have a lot of people join up. So appreciate that. Thanks, Rob. So Mary Ann, Mary Ann again is like three steps ahead of me. Okay, that's all I have for, for training.
Dennis, what was the topic again of the training?
It's called using design and density to preserve rural character and enhance downtown and ham, downtowns and hamlets.
That's a mouthful.
Yeah, I was gonna say, both ends.
Sounds good.
We did get other, from Tom, other education opportunities too. Sent out by Mary Ann. So if anybody needs them or you're alternate, take a look at where they are. Mary Ann sent out the training status of everybody. If you're altered, it doesn't have any, or is shy, just give them a heads up on, on what's going on. Okay? All right. Community reports. Does anybody have anything to report on?
Mike, this is Tom Wilkin. I would just like to add on to that training a bit. That I, a few weeks ago, I started noticing that they're all during the day. And a lot of members are doing other jobs during the day. So today, since it was storming, I did send an email to the Association of Towns and the New York Planning Federation. Just asking why they're thanking them for the notice, but asking them why they're at days and not nights, since these are remote meetings. It should be easier to have them at night, I would think. And I did get a reply back from the Association of Towns today. I haven't got any reply back yet from Planning Federation, but they mentioned that they, they were gonna look into this. They were planning on having some of these things for after hours, maybe on their website to be accessed later. So that might be a thing and they, they're gonna make a mention of it. So I would suggest that anyone from other towns who had the same concern that I have, because in my town, a lot of them said, we can't do it during the day. Uh, maybe drop these agencies a note and kind of ask them if to have it during off hours or have it available and in a, in a library so that people can access them and get credit at another time, because more people who do do it will probably have an impact on getting this type of training available online more for other members.
You know, if it's a Zoom call, they may well be recording it and they could, you know, send you.
Yeah, that's the reason. It could be real easy, but how you get the credit for it and everything else, I don't know. And it's like on the Association of Towns, I would, the basic part for planning board members, I don't really care about. But the second part, the hour, I would have been in, I would be interested in, but I'm not gonna go in the middle of the day for sit through one that I don't have any interest in for the other one. So and I'm not gonna sit in the middle of the day for it anyway. So that's it for me.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Community reports. Anybody have anything to bring up?
This is Vivian Welton. Mary Ann suggested that I announce tonight, I'm officially now a member of the Shandaken Planning Board. So for the record, gotta recuse myself in the future for Shandaken.
Congratulations or condolences. I'm not sure where.
Welcome, welcome.
But I'm continuing as the liaison. There's no volunteer stepping up yet. So we'll see in the future. I'm quite willing to continue doing this.
Good, good. We'd like to have your board.
Thank you.
This is Wilkin again. I just noticed, Rob, that John Conyers in attendees section.
Yeah, I got him. I got John and I got Mike Baden, too.
All right, but he's in, John's in the section that can't.
It's all set, Tom, sorry.
Okay.
To Dennis, I joined late, Roxanne.
I got you too, Rox. Yep, I saw you. Thank you.
Okay. And Tom, thanks for your comment on those education sessions, because I'm in the same situation. They're holding them during the day. I can't attend any of them. We need them in the evenings.
Well, we, just so you know, that Barton Le Judas originally proposed this time for the, our education at three o'clock. And I said, I'm not, I can't offer an education program at three o'clock. My board members are better, more better, more prepared to be available after, after hours than they are during the day. So they moved it. We moved it to seven.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mike, Mike Baden, just a quick community report. Down in Rochester is making new inroads on a short-term rental law. It's been referred from the zoning committee that was working on it to the town board. The town board is going through it. However, many of our town boards are concerned about holding public hearings when the public can't participate in person. So I'm not sure where it's gonna go from that point on. So.
All right.
Oh. Thank you, Dennis, for arranging to have the railroad tracks on Ulster Avenue. Vic, if you're part of any of it, don't, it's taking more tile off because they were a mess. So they're a lot better shape than they are now. Mount Marion's still a nightmare, though. So I appreciate that. Thank you. But I, I made a phone call and they were already on it when I made the phone call. So I had little, little or nothing to do with it. Well, thank you, anyway.
Okay, anything else on community reports?
Yeah, Mike, this is Drew from Olive. As you all know, quite some time ago, four properties in town in Boyceville opted for the flood buyout. And I saw that the RFPs went out earlier, late, late last month for demolition of the four buildings. I believe those bids are due to be opened on the 24th of this month. So I'm making an assumption right now that assuming they get successful bids, those buildings will be torn down before winter time. And one other, one other thing in Olive, I'm heading up a zoning committee, looking at our zoning codes. Our code is about 45 years old with very, very little change over those 45 years. So we're gonna try to start updating things. Making some corrections for starters, looking at short-term rental, solar, all those kinds of things. So hopefully over the next year, you'll see those kinds of things coming before the county planning board. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Drew. All right, anything else on community reports? Okay. Well, at least from a chairman's report, like we've mentioned on training, you all got a copy of the status of where, what training you have, an updated report on the numbers, if anything's missing or not counted, then you have, you've been taking it, follow up with Mary Ann, please. We'll make sure we have everything together on that list correctly. And like I said, if any of your alternates are out of whack, try to get them into the training thing. Okay. Mike? Yeah.
Hey, Robert, can anybody hear me?
Yes.
We all can hear you, John.
Because, because I got no picture on my screen here, as far as me, but I couldn't hear anybody. I kept trying to say, am I here? But nobody's got me. So I'm here. You can hear me now. I can go second if I have to.
We can hear you, John.
Yeah, we just missed seeing your beautiful face, that's all.
Yeah, okay. All right, just as long as you got me in, okay?
It's okay.
Thank you for not breaking our phones.
Mike, or maybe this is Dennis' question. Do we know which board members are, terms are up at the end of this year?
Thank you, Robert.
We, we're, we're looking at that now, Mike. Thanks, thanks, thanks for that. I.
Yeah, because I, you know, the way this legislature moves, people might want to start in September, October to get it done. Otherwise, you may be waiting until March.
Okay. We talked about the by, by, bylaws in the past, off and on, about who can hold meeting, who can run a meeting and the things of that sort. So what we have is, we've put it out. Take a look at it. We haven't revised it in a, in a number of years. But we'd like to take and see if we can, see if we need any changes to it. Or any suggestions for it going forward on it. So if you have any suggestions, please submit them. We'll talk about them and we'll see where we can go from there. If we need to update, we'll update. If it's not clear, we need to update. So read it over and now you have a copy of it and what we can do and can't do under the, under the charter. All right.
Good.
I don't have anything on committee reports. We talked about training already. So what's that? I'll turn it over to Dennis for the department reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Just a couple of things. Financial report, we're in pretty good shape. Even with our cuts from this year, we're in pretty good shape. We continue to move forward. We have gone through our budget submitted. We're currently going through, and I know all the board members will be thrilled to hear this. We're currently going through the capital program. We've been brought into the capital program process a little bit earlier this year than normal. So we're going through that capital program right now. And that will, that will hopefully be in front of the board by, I would say, the middle of October. We may not make the October meeting, but we should definitely make the November meeting in terms of when it's released by the county executive's office. The reason I say that is the county executive's budget releases due October 1. So I'm not sure when he scheduled his budget message and when that, that packet's gonna go out. But just be aware of that. We'll bring it to the board as soon as we get it officially from the, from the executive office. We'll bring it to the board for consideration. On the environmental notice bulletins and grant opportunities, we're, what, what you see is what you got. I have nothing to add to those. I would say that we continue to await to see what the state's gonna do with the consolidated funding applications that are usually released in the spring with due dates right around, you know, by the end, by the middle of summer. We have not seen any release of that material from the state to date. So we're not sure what's gonna happen with respect to that. If it's gonna be released, there's not a lot of information coming out of the state from that as to whether or not they're gonna release it. What they have asked the individual regions to do is to provide them with a blueprint for things that are needed to respond to the COVID and re, and the COVID-19 pandemic and how to best, what, what should be funded to help with reopening. So that starts to lean to the fact that what the, the regions are tasked with essentially amending their economic development plans to the extent that they can deal with what they, what the state should be thinking about funding for reopening. That tends to suggest that somewhere we may see a CFA application open up that would allow the regions to apply for funding that would help for the reopening. We don't know what that's gonna look like, but we are in point of fact expecting some of that. There's been a significant amount of discussion with respect to childcare needs and emergency rental assistance. I don't know whether anybody saw that, but this, the federal government has extended, we don't know what the application of that is to New York State, but it's just extended a moratorium on evictions till the end of the year. The state in the past has lifted the moratorium on evictions and told the courts to go ahead. And they're processing through the courts. The courts have extended their ability to essentially take evictions till into October. So we've got a whole host of things out there with respect to evictions that are currently ongoing that we're, that various agencies and, and government levels are trying to sort out in terms of what it means to, with respect to evictions. Um, communications, I don't have any communications to add in terms of what's already on that, on that sheet. If anybody have any questions, let me know. And then just a director staff reports. What I'm gonna try to do is we file with the executive's office, a report of the office's activities on a monthly basis. We're gonna try to move that out of, out of a filing with the executive's office so that we can file it with the board as well. So that you're aware of what the activities are. That it's basically a two-page, two-page report that sort of summarizes all the activities of the department for, for any given month. And we just filed July's the other day. We'll file August, probably by the middle of this month. So just be aware that that's out there. That would give you a, a good snapshot of what we're doing. So I don't have to speak to it every, every month.
Great.
That's all I have. I have a special topic discussion when you get a chance, Mike.
Dennis, this is William Murray. I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
If you could circle back a little bit to the childcare issue.
Yeah.
What, what funding is being discussed or is there something, anything on the horizon for that?
I, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing any funding being discussed. I'm seeing a discussion about need, but not a discussion about how to meet that need. There's been a back and forth with a number of the child, with a number of the entities. I know KT Tobin's been involved from, from Newfolds. There is a, Dutchess County put a program out through their childcare council using community development block grant funds. And that's generated some discussion at the county, at, at the, in Ulster County is why can't we use community development block grant funds? I answered that question this morning. Dutchess County is an entitlement county and they have funds directly from HUD. Ulster County is a non-entitlement county. And we have not, we don't have any direct funding from HUD for these funds. And so there, there is no community development block grant funds available within Ulster County, A. And B is we haven't seen the state issue a note, a notice of funding availability for any additional community development block grant fund that we could provide, we could, we could use to provide childcare. It's not a panacea, by the way, for childcare, because even CDG funds have to be used for low, moderate income individuals. So I, there's a lot, there's not been a lot of discussion about where the money's gonna come from.
Sure. Thank you, Dennis.
Dennis, it's Vince here. A quick question on reopening UCAT more. Has there, has there been any discussion on that?
Yes, there has. I'm not, I wasn't involved in some of the initial discussions, so I don't want to give a date. But UCAT is moving towards going out of Saturday service to, to provide regular service. I don't know. I think it's sometime in October, but please don't quote me on that. They're in the process of looking at how that's gonna work. I could tell you that that gets complicated now because of this failure of, I shouldn't say the failure, but the idea that, that we thought that the schools were going to open, particularly SUNY Ulster. And that doesn't seem to be the case. And that's a major hub for us. And that's a driver of some of our, some of our ridership. But there is discussions ongoing right now about opening that up and how it's gonna open up. And there is a, there is a, a plan, but I don't know, I don't know the exact date.
Yeah, because I got a bunch of people have been asking about Saturday service up in Sorries and.
I don't think it ever was Saturday service in Sorries. That may, I may be wrong, but I don't think it was ever Saturday service in Sorries.
Yeah, there always has been before.
Was there? Was it one route? Okay. If there was, then that's, then that, that would be the, the part of the discussion.
There was actually three runs.
Okay. Yeah, it's a single route, though. I mean, I, I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else more for Dennis?
I just have one thing on special topics. Mike, if I can. Yes. So I, we had some discussion last month about this, about the census. The state has released half of our funding, so we have about a hundred and thirty some thousand dollars that we're entering into contracts with to provide census outreach. We have a, an extremely tight window about to, to the end of September. If any board member or any community wants yard signs and or flyers, please let us know. We can distribute those. I would be appreciated if you could pick them up. We intend to distribute lawn signs to most of the communities, but I've got a thousand lawn signs coming as of tomorrow. We're gonna start moving those out to the towns. If any board member would want to participate and help getting lawn signs out, we would certainly appreciate it. I know we're gonna talk, we've been talking to the supervisors about this. One of the things we don't want to do is distribute them out to the communities and find ourselves in a situation where they sit in somebody's office. There's, just be aware of that. I've got a thousand door hangers being, being produced and we're gonna produce probably another thousand more. So that we, if somebody wants door hangers, we can certainly give you some door hangers if that's the case to, to distribute. I'm particularly concerned about the city of Kingston, who has basically fallen behind its 2010 participation rate in the mountain communities, particularly Shandaken. And we've had some conversations with Supervisor Stanley. We're trying to get a, like, what we call tension signs. We've talked to the hardware store on Main Street. But if anybody needs what I would call print material to, to hand out or to get out in your community, please reach out to us and we'll make, or if you can come in and I'll give it to you, you can pick it up. The tension signs are kind of neat, but they have to be, they should be put in, if you have a business in town that you know will put them up and, and in a window or inside for, in some instances, we'll be happy to distribute them. I have about 20 of those. But be aware that you are looking for your help to, to help distribute that. So let us know. We'll do our best to get you the materials that you need. And we can also reach back to the Census Department itself, which has materials. If anybody wants to know what they look like, reach out to me or actually reach out to Mary Ann. My email box is buried. So reach out to Mary Ann and she'll come in and nag me and say, you need to respond to this. But that would be appreciated. Anything you can do would be appreciated.
Dennis, this is Vivian Welton. Have you actually spoken to Rob Stanley about putting up signs this month in Shandaken? I know they don't, they don't.
I have, I have not, but, but, but there's been emails going out with respect to this. And I think I called Rob. I can't remember. I've called so many people. I spoke into Eric or Aaron from the hardware store.
Okay, Eric, yes.
Yeah, he's indicated a willingness to put a sign up in the hardware store, but I haven't seen any, you know, the, the, communities know that we have yard signs and we've been telling them that we're gonna deliver them. So I hope they have somebody out there that will actually put them out. I just don't have the manpower staff to put them, to start sticking them, sticking them on lawns or at intersections.
If the town is okay with it, Dennis, I can do that. I'll be in Kinston tomorrow. What time to get the material?
Tomorrow afternoon, hopefully for the yard signs.
Yes, I, I can help with that.
Oh, that's great. That would save us. And I can give you the tension sign. You can deliver that to Eric if you want to.
Right, perfect.
That's, that's super. Thank you, Vivian. We'll look forward to seeing you tomorrow. Then tomorrow, like, leave it till late in the afternoon. That's, that's super. Thank you, Vivian. We'll look forward to seeing you tomorrow then. Tomorrow, like, leave it till late in the afternoon, say around one thirty, two, two o'clock.
Okay.
All right, give us a call. I'll let you know whether the the material comes in.
Okay, good.
Hey Dennis, I got a bag of stuff that's down at the security desk. If you want to put some flyers up there and down, down there. I'm coming down in the morning. I'll take them back to Veltall.
That's fine. Why don't you just come upstairs? You're not restricted in the building anymore, Vince.
No.
So you can come upstairs. Just tell them you have a, you know.
Okay.
All right, but make it in the afternoon. I won't have things till the afternoon.
All right, well done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Yeah.
Have you been given any percentages of the, the NRFU, the non-response follow up? That has been contacted because I was seeing some reports yesterday online that some areas. Are now even ending as early as September eighteenth because the census has deemed that they have quote unquote enough. Response for that area, whatever that may mean.
If we don't get them all, we don't care anymore, right? Is that?
Well, that's how I read it, but my, my question is, is, you know, and and I know, you know, the, the terminology. That that would be the, the body that didn't respond. I'm curious if there, that there's a percentage that has been contacted.
No, I don't know that, but we can ask that question.
I don't know if they can make percentages available. They can for response rate, but I didn't know if they could specifically on the NRFU. Because Rochester is sitting just a little below where we were ten years ago. But I'm not as concerned as I was because. We were only just slightly over fifty percent ten years ago. And I think like, for example, Town Hall has gotten three letters telling us to fill out our census. And, you know, I'm sure there's a number of situations like that.
That'd be great. I I'm hopefully, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm hopefully optimistic in the communities. Except for those with a lot of second homeowners.
Yeah.
But I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit concerned about the city of Kingston and we've, you know, we've targeted the city of Kingston with respect to flyers and. And banners. And also we've hired Rupco. Rupco is going to go door to door in the subsidized housing. And put door, door, door hangers on each door. We've provided, I think, a thousand flyers to the city, so they're going to put them in the, in the mailboxes. Because I'm really concerned if the city loses, if the city loses population, we, we may end up losing a metropolitan area designation and we don't want to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
The last question I have is any word on the executive order regarding remote meetings?
No, Vince, I'm sorry. I'm shaking my head. You can't see that. I apologize, but no.
Vince, September fourth is the date for the next time it's due, and he usually does it about. Five or six hours before it's due, so.
Don't think it's probably going to be continued, taken.
I'm, I'm imagining it will be.
Thanks.
Okay. They did on a special topic status. I'm good. Thank you. Rob, we have any public comment or any public?
If you have any public comment, raise your hand now. We'll, we'll recognize you. This is your chance. Okay, guess not.
Okay. Now we begin the zoning referrals.
All right, let me share my screen. All right.
All right, town of Sopas, any recusals?
Yep, I'm recusing.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Thank you.
All right, so we reviewed this for an area variance a few months back. Was a minimum lot size and minimum lot width, if I recall correctly. Cuny Ranch Holdings is a former Vennerian building. They're going to propose demolish it. And build just over a two thousand square foot structure for a bakery and cafe use. And it's right. At the edge, southern edge of Port Union. So sixteen spaces plus one ADA. Let me just go to Ariel just to remind you. Oh wait, hang on, can't do it like that. So there we go. This is the property in question here. This is your building here. So that bone is going to be removed. And new building is going to be proposed be set back a little bit further back, if you all recall. Existing access is going to be updated, but pretty much maintained. So let me go back to presentation. It's everything received. So just to clear, remind you, so this is the existing conditions, building to be removed. Currently has a gravel parking lot. This is the proposal right here. So sixteen spaces, channelized access to nine W. That has some. Pre-approval, I believe. And let's see, have a patio area and you have the bakery itself. It's setback from the road. A bit. And we had this discussion last time about, does have public water and sewer, by the way. This is an alternative design that was given to us, but I haven't seen any minutes or discussion as to. Why this wasn't. The preferred option, because when you go back to the. Ariel, lighting is good, by the way. When you go back to the aerial and you look at this, this is the building here. And you have a very consistent. Front setback, very consistent front setback. And you have a town that's looking into doing design guidelines and mixed use buildings in the Port Union Hamlet. And this proposal is going to set it back bit further back from the road and kind of move away from that design aesthetic. So just some question as to, it may have to do with turning radius and movements and also the slope of the site in the back. But just want to give some thought with respect to keeping community character. The same context that it currently exists. Especially in light that the way the port, the direction that Port Union and this opus is. Moving forward with making, proposing to go forward and make some zoning changes. They don't have anything in the books yet or even in the works, but they're. In the process of moving that way. That's what it looks like from the road right now. And this is what it's for. So it's a nice building, but it's going to be, but it's going to be setback from the road. Comments. Sidewalk set aside. Let me just go back to the arrow real quick. So we commonly make this sidewalk set aside comment. As you can see, the sidewalk stops. Over here, right in front of the skating. And then kind of stop. So as, and since this is still kind of an urban. Portion of the corridor. Just some thought to at least set, putting a set aside in place for. This is a particularly dense kind of neighborhood, probably the last stretch that is fairly dense in the Hamlet, Port Union. So just some thought to leave some room for a set aside for a future sidewalk dedication. Okay. Also street trees along with that, I was recommended lawn fragile in conjunction with that. Sidewalk set aside, NISE final approval, just to make certify that that proposed curb cut complies with NISE regulations. And just an advisory comment, just to consider looking at moving the patio to the front, just giving another hard look. To look at where the patio location is and where the building is located so that, you know, it connects more. To the corridor and more of an urban feel as opposed to a strict commercial feel. Feel. And I'm going to be sending back some of our design guideline materials that show. How a corridor evolves over time and what to look for and to keep it, especially since it is a little bit more urban here. It's not strict commercial yet, how to avoid that. And I'm just going to give some guide, send some guidance and. Design materials back to the town for advisory comments.
Wait a minute, I, I just want to be clear. There's an alternate layout. I mean, how does that play in? What do you mean alternate? Like if the. If it's alternate. Does it get re-refer? You know, I don't think that we should be voting on one thing and then an alternate. Unless that, unless, unless it's commonplace. Yeah, I don't know.
Let me guide you through that, Gio. Essentially, we, we would like them to consider alternative designs to be a little bit more urban. If they decide said yes, that it is, then they would have to re-refer it. It's a change to the.
Okay.
Change to the, the site plan. If they say, no, we like it how it is. Then it's just a require modifications that stand. That's why it's an advisory column. We're not requiring anything, but. We think, or at least staff thinks, because of the way the corridor is laid out, because of the way. The town of Sopas is moving towards a more mixed use urban kind of style of development that they want to foster. It's just worth a second look. But this doesn't require them to make that. Change that they, and if, it doesn't have to be resubmitted unless they actually decide that they want to make that change.
Got you.
Motion to support staff.
Robert, can you go back to the site plan, please?
Sure.
Let me go back here. So there it is.
Is there some sort of a. Barrier. Against the other property because now this proposed, proposed building is pretty, is almost in the backyard. Of the next door neighbor because of their setback issue. Is there a fencing or?
Yeah, there's a fence, this is a fence detail. There, I mean, that's along the patio. I don't see there's one against the property itself, though.
Might want to set some sort of landscaping suggestion for a long where shares. That because the house next to it's residential, so. And if they're setting it back like that, it's, they, those folks have no privacy.
That's a very good comment.
Okay. Some sort of screening vegetative buffer comment. Fencing. Just for them to take a look at, not where, I don't want to make them say this is the way you should do it, but just to take a look at options for a buffer for the. Northern, so northern setback.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we, does, do they accept that amendment to the staff recommendations?
I'll move it. Vince.
We already have a motion and a second, Vince. We have a Mr. Wilken and Mr. Bod made a motion. I just wanted to know if they'll accept the amendment.
Faden will.
Dennis, I didn't make that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Mr. Watt. I think it was Mr. Watt.
Vince made the motion. He did.
I'm sorry, Vince. I apologize. I got the, I got the voice wrong. I was, I got thrown out with my internet, so I apologize.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second amended to include that comment. Any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carried. Next one up.
All right. All right.
Recusals, Mike?
Any recusals? Gardner.
Gardner, this is a no kind of impact situation. As you know, Garner hasn't signed our exception agreement, so it's a two lot subdivision of an industrially zoned. Property to make it into two potential industrial uses that preserves a road. That would go in between the two sites and connect to a third site. So staff has no issue with, with it. I can show you the aerial if you like.
Motion to support staff comments.
Gio second. Thank you, Gio. Any. Further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. Move along to the next one, Gardner. Any recusals?
A one sixty-nine McKinstry Road. This is also County Route seven A. It's a proposal for a lot line consolidation. So no kind of impact on, as you can see, the parcel outlined in red is going to be merged with the rest of this square. Parcels. So you'll have multiple residences on a single parcel. No kind of impact with that.
Motion to support staff.
Second.
Gio will second.
Hey, Rob, can we, can we also add in there a, a, congratulations on eliminating a flag lot because. No, I'm serious because.
No, I agree with you completely.
As, as they become more and more prevalent, you run into more and more problems. So I, I think it's important to call it out when it's solved.
No, I almost said it. It's like, I almost said it before you did.
So I have a motion from, I have a motion from Watkins and a second from Gio. Would they accept the amendment to advisory comment on a, thank you for eliminating a flag lot?
I encourage, I encourage that amendment.
There you go.
Okay, I have a motion and a second amended. Motion. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Move on to the next one. You're on a roll, Rob.
All right. So town of Garner, one fifteen Sheldon Road. This is actually also a special permit. It's the next two referrals. May not say that top of your screen there, but it is two referrals because they're doing a single family residence studio and garage in. The scenic protection district. Only access to this property is actually from the town of Shawngum. It's five hundred feet from Minnewaska State Park, which is why it's getting referred to us. Okay, just to show you real quick. There's no kind of impact on this, but just showing you real quick. So there's a town line. Only access is through McKinstry Road, which comes up here and swings up. The mountain act. This is the, let me show you the parcel. This is the parcel. Here. So you have an existing road that gets to it. The driveway is in there. There's no kind of impact on that.
Faden second.
Who was the first on that one?
Me.
I don't know who me was.
Who's the, who's, who's me?
Say your name.
Vince.
Thanks, Vince.
Me. We're doing, we're doing both of them, right, Rob?
Correct. This is the model.
Okay, we have a motion second.
Wow, that's good looking model.
That's nice.
Actually, it's three different phases. That's the final phase of the model.
That was done with the three D printer. Any further, none further discussion? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Okay. Going along. Town of Hurley, any recusals?
All right, Town of Hurley is proposing a short term rental law. And I'll just preface this, this is probably one of the more, most succinct and better proposals we've seen so far with respect to short term rental laws. And the reason that is because the whole question of non-owner occupied short term rentals is not allowed. They have to have, as you see in the definition here, that should, definition of owner occupied includes dwelling unit in which the principal. Is the principal and domicile of the owner, who's a natural person, not an artificial entity. So it has to be a person. It has to be their principal residence and they have to be there at the time of the rental. And they don't allow rental multifamily units, so it's only single family, two family and accessory buildings. The town retains the ability to set the maximum number of permits at issues per year or. Or to amend that number or reduce it, in fact. And of course, they put in the clause to register with the Ulster County. For, for the hotel tax.
Are we going to make a recommend approval, Rob, or what? Congratulations?
I think, I think, congratulations. I think that's what we had discussed in the office today.
Okay.
Where's the comments?
All right, we're recommending approve.
Okay. We have a motion. Well, this is the, oh, okay, I got you. I will make that motion.
I'll second it. Scott McCarthy.
Thanks, Scott.
I have, I have a.
Any further, any discussion?
Yes, I, I have a, a comment. They are apparently not allowing non-owner occupied. Short term rentals.
Correct.
Okay, and is, after we approve this, this goes for a public hearing? Is that the procedure?
They may have already had. They may have already had the public hearing, but it would have it would be required to have a public meeting. Yes.
Uh huh. Okay.
Usually, at the same time you make a referral, when you deem something's complete, you're also at the same time scheduling a public hearing at same motion, or at least that's that's best practice.
Right. It seems to be rather restrictive compared to other short-term rental rules that I've seen in other towns and not allowing any non-owner occupied short-term rentals. So I would I would question that as being too restrictive. They could certainly put in restrictions that limit the amount or the limited ability to have multiple, for instance, multiple rentals for one person. This seems overly simple for me. That's my personal opinion. I'm also a short-term rental owner, and so I've been involved in art discussions and baking. And we certainly don't intend to be that restrictive in our town so far. I can see how it simplifies things and how, you know, it makes no gray areas, but I think that in our town, it would cut out a lot of people who are already doing short-term rentals, non-owner occupied with sufficient supervision, that it's not a community problem.
It is. This is Johanna Weiner, and it is basically the same as this list in Ellenville. They do not allow non-owner occupied. You have to have an owner occupied to have a short-term rental. Looks almost identical to to this list.
Now, I assume that they're already in part being done in Hurley. Would this new rule cut people out of business that are already established?
If they're legally established, I don't know whether they would be able to continue as a non-conforming use. I don't know. You know, they certainly would have to register with the town, whether they could continue, whether they'd be a fight with respect to non-conforming uses up to the up to the local local community. But in general, you know, there's not really a it would be I would I would think not, to be honest with you. I would think that if you're currently doing it, you would not be allowed to to continue.
Dennis, this is Chris Brand from Marlboro. We're currently looking at this issue as well, and I'm curious if you guys could what what's the percentage that have current short-term rental laws and zoning amendments for this type of thing that are not owner occupied? Because we're kind of struggling with that right now ourselves.
Yeah, I think that's the big struggle. I would remind everybody that I have a motion and a and a second on on the table here. And we can get into some of these other discussions on basically that are that are, you know, associated with short-term rentals rather than the Hurley law. It's simple. It's straightforward. It does what and quite frankly, it does what many communities have done, not just not many communities in Ulster County.
Rob, Mike Baden with a question? Sure. Does it include inspection for New York State Building and Fire Code because residential properties are excluded from that? So I guess when it's allowed in all zoning districts, is part of the permit process or whatever the process that they get their approval on, does it include an inspection?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
This is Matt Rudikoff. I have a small procedure question. I was under the impression that the that the county referral had to come in while the public hearing was still open. Is that not correct?
For a zoning statute, I believe you're correct, Matt. That doesn't mean it's followed, but I believe you are correct. And site plan is the same way, 10 days prior to the public hearing. It's more in the it's done more in the in the in the violation than it does in the in the actual having it done.
Because in theory, the public in theory, the public has a right to know what the county's recommendation.
That's correct. That's why it that's why it's written that way.
Thank you.
And going back to what Mike Baden said, I think the beauty of having an owner on the premise is means that somebody who's vested in the property is there and would look after it if there was a fire or anything like that. I get it. They might be out shopping, but I think that that goes along to say with it. It brings another level of protection and care for the property.
Yeah, Gio, my concern is is in these short-term rentals, you often get non-bedroom units designated as sleeping areas. You know, you get the couch, pull-out couch in the basement, or you get the the little, you know, futon that they put up in the attic. And when those places are not established as bedrooms, they may not have the proper egress. And without the inspection, that would not be known. So that's why I bring up the inspection because once a C of O is is placed in place for a private residence, the building inspector doesn't have any ability to go back into that that building, except if there's a change. And I know this is a change, but I wanted to make sure the permit included that inspection.
But again, I'm saying as an owner, and I'm going to rent my place out and I'm living there, I have a little more worry and a little more care to say, all right, I'm putting somebody up in the attic with a couch. I'm gonna put a smoke detector up there. I think that's why forcing the owner to live there with the rental is an excellent move.
Absolutely. Absolutely. My point is, my just my point was, they can't put somebody in the attic unless they have a fire escape because it's above a certain height, and that's spelled out in building code. So
You know, you certainly have a point, Mike.
All right, guys. There's a lot of pros and cons on this, but how about this for the amendment? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the zoning statute? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, let's move on to the town of Kingston. Any recusals?
Mr. Conyer, right?
Still around there.
Mr. Conyer, you still here?
I don't think he is. No, he is.
Conyer's on, but it's Mike is
Yeah, I know.
Sometimes the
Hurley did have the inspection clause and also has a whole list of violations, just so everybody knows that.
So we're I'm going to assume Mr. Conyer's excused. We can go ahead, Mike.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you now.
Okay, yes, I excuse myself.
Thank you. Very good.
All right.
Go ahead, Rob.
530 Route 28. This is special permit site plan review. So it's two referral numbers. This is a let me go to the aerial. Everybody who goes up 28 will know the site upon viewing it. Of course. My browser has gone to sleep.
Why did this?
I don't think that one's it, Rob.
No, I just have some. There you go. Here's Route 28. So DC is lead agency on this application, by the way. So it's previously existing mine and are going to conduct additional mining activities within the previously mined area on on-demand basis. I believe a total of 167,000 cubic yards is what the maximum number of crushed rock that they're going to be excavating.
Point of order. Why are we considering this referral when the counties already shut them down? Not this. We're not aware of any. I don't think so, Vince. County has no jurisdiction here.
Can we move on?
Yep.
Let's go, Rob.
Let me go back to the So no excavation will take place entirely within the previously mined area. Existing traffic state is updated. They still have adequate site lines and full full turning movements are allowed. There's no no significant change in level of service. DC has already issued a negative declaration on this, by the way. So the red outline shows you existing conditions. Pretty much this shows you that they're still mining within that same area, that second line. This is the proposed plan, plus they also do have a reclamation plan, which over time they'll be doing, putting, I believe, six inches of gravel and then and then landscaping grass on top ones as they reclaim it. So staff doesn't believe there's any county impact on the mining on an existing mining location.
Hey. I have a motion.
I have a okay, I have a question. Like
We get the motion, then we can talk about it. Do we have a motion?
Drew, I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Drew. Is there a second?
Wilken, I'll make the motion. A second.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Okay, Vivian.
Okay, is this related to the concrete fabrication plant?
No.
No.
No, is it in a similar location?
It is south and east of it, but it's not adjacent.
Okay. So is there a it seems like they're saying that there's a limited timeframe after which the reclamation will be done. I'm confused on that.
Though I believe it's about 10 years, but it's it's the the 167,000 cubic yards is their what they're looking to do.
Okay, so the reclamation is going to be as they take out the they will put in soil on top of it. It's like that area will be finished, then no more no more mining on that spot?
Correct, in accordance with New York State law.
Okay, because it looks like there's two levels on the site, like the level where it's flat and then this level where it's raised, and I guess they can continue taking
We'll be regrading as they go as well.
Okay.
As part of reclamation.
Okay, I get it. Is this near any wild areas that could be impacted?
No, it's it's in it. It's in an existing mine, and I think that the key here isn't, from my perspective, anyway, the key here is that Department of Environmental Conservation as lead agency has issued a negative declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. So I got a neg deck from essentially the the same agency that would be concerned about forest areas, etc., etc.
Okay. That answers my question.
Any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Town of Lloyd, any recusals?
Scott, you're accused? I'm needed on the you're not on the town board, but
It's a town board issue.
Okay. Local law E of 2020 is a zoning map amendment. Now, just a little history on this. The W, it says the rezone parcels from R2 to create the water business district. Point of fact, the WB district actually exists in the land use table. When it was adopted, the wrong zoning map was basically adopted, and this zoning map amendment corrects that by assigning these parcels to that district. And let me just show you what those parcels are, but it involves Shepherd Park. So
We we have a zoning district in the in the zoning statute that has no place geographically in the town.
Correct. So here it is. It's all along the waterfront. It's let me zoom out a little bit. It's all these parcels. Let me annotate this so you can see what I'm doing. But it's basically parcels in here and parcels on the other side of a track here. I'm I'm increasing the number parcels that we're talking about there, but that's the general gist of the area. And the WB district basically allows and I I I added up the total number of acres there. It's not that much acreage that they're adding, but it allows use or water-dependent or water based parks, recreation, or existing park, allow playgrounds. So this is consistent with their local waterfront revitalization plan, consistent with their comprehensive plan. There's a no county impact on this zoning map amendment, except for one required modification that they actually they can't rezone by SBL. They must send and update their map and send that in to the county for review. It has
The map has to be filed with the clerk.
Right.
That's the key.
And doesn't have to be filed with the state as well.
Well, eventually, but it certainly has to be filed with the clerk.
And of course, we keep online database, which is on the same parcel viewer in which we try to maintain all the zoning maps for the county. So we'd love to have it included so that anytime we're doing referrals, we can have the most recent zoning.
So it does have to be sent to the state as part of the finalized local law.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Vince moves it.
Vince moved it. Do I have a second?
Mike Baden second.
Any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Move along, Rob.
All right, let me go back to the PowerPoint. All right. Town New Paul, Springtown Road. This is a variance for an existing fence on Springtown Road. They have a six-foot fence where they require feed is required. That's no county impact on a fence in the front yard.
I have a motion. Vince moved it. Okay, I have a second.
Second.
Thanks, Rock. That any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, on to the village, Rob.
One recusal.
Mr. Murray's recused on this one. 54 Elting Place. This is a lot within a residential area portion of the town. This is one vacant lot. They're proposing a single-family home. All single-family homes now require site plan review in the village. There's no county impact on a single-family home.
McCarthy motion.
Gio second now.
Who's the first? McCarthy.
McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
And Gio.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Village of New Paul's sale project.
Now, nobody has to recuse on this yet because this is a pre-referral at the request of the village and the town and village to just to send it to us and get some feedback. So this is going to be advisory anyway. We will see this again for official site plan review. We don't have elevations yet, which will be probably one of the most telling things. Just a little history. This is I think Dennis and I have been about three or four gateway meetings on this one. The original proposal was about seven, eight stories in height.
But where is it, Rob? Just tell them it's it's the former pit in
Yes, it's the pit. Sorry. Let me show you where it is. Sorry. Giving you too much background without giving you visuals. All right. Elting Place. Yes, let's do this one. All right, so village hall, here's your here's the pit. This is a Placal Avenue as you head back in Starbucks. Useful lot. Here's the pit right there. This right in the middle there. So it's three buildings. It's always been three buildings. This time there is no residential component. There's always been a hotel component, always been a spa component, a restaurant component, and banquet hall component. So those are six stories of two separate buildings. And the third building, which was originally going to be apartments, is now retail on the first floor and two floors of professional office space. And also, there's a two-story parking garage underneath. And let me just bring up the slide, which gives you all the basics of it real quick. All right, so building 150 hotels, three stories. And I'll have a pool outdoor patio area and also the main lobby of the hotel. Second building, like I said, is a banquet hall, cafe, restaurant, and a spa. And about 280 seats for the for all the facilities. Building three, like I said, also has retail. It's mixed commercial, retail, and professional use, professional office space. And then there's that two-level parking garage, 363 spaces, more than what the code allow requires. And then there's loading burst at the more than what the code allow, requires, and then there's loading berths at the garage levels. And then there's plenty of, uh, public spaces with plazas, green spaces, and outdoor decks. There's also some green roofs, roof gardens, and then on the bottom of the slide, what's what I have here? Can't read it. And then there's two different ways to access that, uh, driveway, plus there's a new street that connects the, uh, two roads together. And I'll just show you some of the, uh, concept site plans here, so this is, let's see.
This is facing the right way, Rob, so north is to, north is to your right.
Right.
Correct. Okay, so Platical Avenue, so you have, like I said, this is your connect, you now have a connector road between Hasbrook and, uh, Platical Avenue. And then, so this is the commercial building here, three stories, this is the banquet hall and spa, and this is your hotel. And access to the parking garage would be through here and through there. Don't have, I don't have, I don't have, this is, like I said, this isn't a full set yet. This is a more, uh, this is flipped around, just.
Just so everybody knows, now, now, this is the road, Rob, I'm sorry.
It's 180.
Yeah, so, um, this is now the road through here, right? So it's flipped 180, right? And then, this is, this is, so you're looking at, this is facing east, this is facing west. So you get a sense of what's out there with respect, so they just flipped it around on us, that's all they did. And this is the entrance way off of, um, this is the entrance way off, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Rob, I'm good.
We're fine, I mean, right now, staff comments were, with respect, we preferred an option, given the need for housing in the village, that rather than have a professional retail component, or at least have a mixed use, there should be some apartment component to it.
So if I can, Rob, so I, I think, there's a couple of things I think we want to do, is, is one is, is I think we want to encourage the village and the applicant to essentially make a better use of this site. It's, it's clearly an underperforming site within the village, it clearly has a lot of potential for development. We clearly have a developer that is responding to the, that can, that can perform with respect to that. He's certainly been dogged enough to, to move this forward. I think we want to, we want to say first of all, that the, these types of infill projects are one of the greenest projects that you can have with respect to using these, these types of lands and moving this project, and it's an under, underperforming project from a tax perspective, that's the first thing, and we want to congratulate both the applicant and the village to take, to move to consider this. The second thing is the fact that the applicant has provided all of the parking that he needs on-site by using a parking garage structure, is to the credit that none of this, he's not counting off-street parking or exist, existing municipal lots, et cetera, et cetera, which a lot of the others do, so that's a commendation as well. And I think the last thing is, is to encourage, um, a design review that, that makes, that really takes a look at design and density in this area, so that we have a contextual design of, of the project with respect to the New Palt community, not that the Village Hall is the best design project in the world, but at least in the, the understanding of that density, density and design go together, and there should be some real attention to design. And then last but not least, I think, is what we want to say, is that we would encourage the community to consider, um, a modicum of housing here, because if, there is a great need for, for, for housing within, within the community, doesn't have to be affordable, it can be market rate, but the point being is, is that they should consider some sort of housing here. And in particular, I think, um, it makes some sense, given the fact that we're talking about this walkability to the Hamlet area and to the village, the rest of the village. So those.
The village code would probably require it if they had a certain, hit a certain threshold of units, that there would be some.
Yeah.
I was going to add, that I'm sure the, the village has some sort of code that requires some low-income housing, and that's possibly why they're not including it right now.
Well, I think, I think, what, I don't think the, the housing is permitted in this zone, is that what it is, Rob?
Oh.
So.
I have to double check then, I don't.
But the main thing is, there's, there's been some pushback, I think, from the housing proposal that was here originally. So I think what we want to do is, is just remind the community and the applicant that there is a, there is a housing need, and, and there's an opportunity to respond for it here, and I just, just, I don't want to lose that opportunity. If, if there's a no, I wouldn't be upset, but I think we should just, we should just say it, 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 because, because of the, of the need.
Dennis, Mike, Mike Baden, that's, that's, you're discussing full-time housing, right, not student housing?
Uh, that's correct.
Easily becoming, uh, you know, a big student housing area, being that it's so walkable to the college, so.
No, that, that would be correct, and, and it may end up being, they may be up rented for students, but it wouldn't be designed to be rented for students.
Okay, thank you.
Open rental.
This is Matthew, have they done any preliminary traffic work? I mean, is, is this amount of development, uh, in, in light of the streets and the intersection?
That's a great comment, Matt, and we could make that comment back, um, but, um, there is, the Hasbrook Street runs out to 32, and there's not a lot of traffic on that street. Um, so there is that opportunity, but I think you're absolutely right, we should make the comment that, that there needs to be an understanding of the traffic impacts, particularly with respect to the large dining facility that's here. Not so much with respect to the retail facility, because the retail, retail facility is probably going to be a lot of bypass trips, a lot of trip, a lot of trip credits can be taken, but I think you're right, and we should make that comment, and thanks for bringing it up.
Well, that kind of land use has a very high peak hour, because people come and go when they're very narrow timeframe. But I have another comment, it scares me a little bit, is, you know, that many, that parking garages are hugely expensive. And I'm just wondering, you know, if, if in this market, a, 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 a commercial development like this can really support, how many spots in that parking garage, 300 spots or something?
Yeah. 360.
That's a, that's a huge, huge capital investment.
Yeah, we don't, I don't disagree with you. But.
Are they making those parking spaces available to the public, or is that just for the, uh?
They're covering their, they're covering their.
322 are required by the zoning code, but they're actually providing 363.
One thing I wanted to raise, Dennis, is, this is Linda, Gary. Uh, New Palt has a chronic problem with its wastewater treatment plant. I believe they're still under consent order with BEC for, uh, fixing a lot of problems and having overflows there.
Yeah, and, and I know what.
I know what they're doing in terms of analyzing the capacity that the plant has.
Yeah, and I could tell you what, what the, the discussion in the past has been with respect to this, is, is that the developer would then put some money towards, because the problem, most of the problem with New Palt is not in the capacity of the plant per se, it's I and I. So the thought, and, and the, and the village has been methodical about getting grants for I and I, uh, and continue to clean up their I and I problem. And so the discussion with this relative to, the discussion in the past relative to this has been, uh, that the developer would contribute money, um, consistent with their, with their demand issues to, to help clean up the I and I. So we're aware of that, and, but that's a good comment, and we can make it, uh, back, that basically that there needs to be some consideration with sewage capacity and the need for I and I work on that basis. So we, we could certainly make that comment as well.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I just looked at my, I, I just looked at my construction cost estimating document. Parking garages have $20,000 of space.
Yes, that's cheap, that's cheap, Matt, that's probably closer to 26.
Wow.
But yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
That's $6 million.
Yep. That's not, that, you know, the, the developer, all of the proposals that we've seen have included a parking garage here. And the developer seems to be aware of it.
Hi Dennis, uh, this is William Murray from the village, can I comment?
Sure.
Sure, uh, with parking comes traffic, so I think we need to make some sort of comment about that.
Yeah. Yeah, and that was Matt's, that was Matt's issue, and we'll, we certainly can, we could certainly make that comment. I, I think, just so the board understands where I'm coming from, my sense would be is, is not that the, not that the project works, but that the project is an important way to take a look at how this site could be reused. And absent, um, absent that, this site is going to sit in the village as an underutilized site for a long period of time. So the fact that you have a developer that's sort of willing to, to run the gauntlet of going through that necessary approval process, I think the first thing that we say to him is, is that, or enter the village, is, is that this underutilized site deserves this kind of a treatment and deserves this kind of look. And then you, the second thing you say is, yes, there are things that need to be sort of technical, the technical things need to be worked out, the sewer issue, the traffic issue, et cetera. But the main thing is, can the community wrap itself around the idea of, of development on the site? And if they can do that, I think you're a long way towards essentially, um, looking at a project in a little bit different light than it's been looked at before, which was, you started with the idea is, we don't want anything here, at least we can start with an idea that we want something here, then we can move on to the technical work that essentially needs to go and put it there.
This is Johanna, why, that's essentially why they gave it to you for pre, pre-approval, right?
I believe that's the case, yes.
So for some, for some input.
No, wait, wait.
It's not a zoning of any board issue, but I'd be, with that kind of economics, I'd be asking the applicant if he's proposing to go for taxes, for, for, for payments and move taxes, or tax, or some other kind of federal aid, or whether his project is dependent on that kind of financial assistance.
I, I would suspect, you know, we don't know what, I mean, the parking may not be free. Yeah, the parking may end up being, I would presume that the parking is going to be paid parking. And that, and that, that number, whatever that charge is, gets, gets, you know, goes to, towards the capital cost. But as it stands now, I think we can ask the question, but I, I would not, you know, as typically the hotel and others would not qualify, and retailers has not qualified in the past for pilots. We sent this out as a, uh, recommendation, I would take motion. But what I would hope to do is get from the board a motion in support of us, of a, of comments back, but not as a recommendation, it's just comments back as a pre-referral, and we'll, we'll word that in that, in that instance, and include the language that we look forward to seeing this as it becomes more fully developed and gets resubmitted to the board.
I'll make that motion, Dennis.
Scott McCarthy, second.
Okay, I think I had a motion. A second, who was it?
Scott.
I need the motion, Vince, dear.
Okay, a second was Scott?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to have a motion, a second, of sending back comments, um, uh, that we'll raise in our, in our discussion regarding this project. And, um, looking forward to see it's developed and, uh, coming back to us. Any further discussion? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Okay. Move along, Town of Olive, any recusals?
Yes, Drew, I'm recused.
Thank you, Drew. Local law number two of 2020, this is another special authorization, as the tat, this is in the zoning statute, the town's updating chapter 146 telecommunications, which also comprises wireless telecommunications. And what this is, this is work that, um, committee, working with, uh, some, uh, law firm, developed amendments to the town's wireless standards to make it, uh, consistent with FCC law, and, uh, clean up some of the, uh, coding, so they updated and added clarification to shot clock, made some, and, and let's see, they integrated small wireless facilities into the code that's consistent with FCC, guidelines or regulations as well. So really no county impact on this, staff just makes advisory comments that should be consistent with county policy, we prefer multiple shorter towers that are just above the tree line as possible, as opposed to larger towers that have multiple collocations, and a look at existing structures first, prior to towers as an option as well.
So Rob, I know, I know.
Staff recommendation.
Can I, if I may?
Sure.
Um, thanks, Roxanne. Um, I know Rob and I didn't discuss this, and, and sometimes, you know, my brain freezes on me during the middle of the afternoon, so. Um, I, I would want to add something to the advisory comment, and that is, is that to make sure that there's some recognition for emergency communication facilities, um, particularly those that may be cited separately from, um, the normal, the normal cellphone or other telecommunications facilities. I'm running into a situation in, in, um, in sorgetes where the town is trying to build the emergency communications facility, and the, the town zoning statute mentions commercial telecommunications facilities, provides no indications of how treat, uh, government communications facilities, and I think it would behoove us to essentially just mention that back to the town as part of the advisory, that they ought to have some understanding that of how their zoning statute is going to treat emergency communication facilities. And Drew, you'll know one of the reasons I'm bringing this up, is the county has a tower on Tonchi Mountain, which is an existing communications facility, that tower may need to be upgraded in the near future, not so much in terms of height, but in terms of strength, um, to hold some of the additional antennas that we need to put on it for interoperability. I wouldn't want to run into a situation where I, I, I have nothing, I can reach into the town zoning statute and say it's a permitted use, or, or that there's some indication that, that the town would allow these, allow that to move forward in, in a, in some fashion. So that's why I bring it up. Thanks, Roxanne, I apologize for stepping on you.
Okay, I, I made the motion to, uh, support staff recommendation.
Sorry, Mike Baden will second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? On to Platico.
All right.
Wilkin, I'm abstaining, or I mean, I'm recused, sorry.
G O is going to also recuse.
Okay.
Okay, G O.
I got you. All right, so this is on Route 32, let me get to the area. Odina Automotive, so. This, they have an existing location as a repair shop, they're moving up on the corridor to a larger location. So let me zoom out a little bit. So Hanford's is over here. Here's Hanford, here's Dunkin' Donuts, and then as you move back, stop that. As we move south, we come to some warehouse structures that are no longer in use, and they're going to be using this particular one at this location for their automotive repair business. So.
So wait, stay here, Rob, for a second, just stay right there, so I'm going to do something, this is more fun than I thought it would be. So the access is going to be through here.
Correct.
All the parking is back behind the building, um, and then if, one of the things I want to show you is we have sidewalks, Robert, right? We have sidewalks down through here, I think.
Yeah, there's, we'll, we'll get to the site plan while we do that.
Okay. Sidewalks. You have an idea where things are when you look at it.
There's also an access here that should be. But that, on the northern property, that, that's, I don't believe there's one there yet to serve this property, and there's no, and the owner to the north doesn't want cross-access, I don't believe.
Yes, you are absolutely correct, there's no access on the north end of the site.
Rob, are you going back to site plan?
I haven't gone to yet.
Yeah, I think you can.
I thought you were having some fun, so.
No, I'm good, I'm done, my fun's done, thank you.
All right, so. So here's your site. As we said, so there is no access to the northern end, like we said, there's, the only access is here, and they'll be upgrading that, so need final NIZ approval for that. All activity will be behind the site, so you won't see any automotive repair going on site itself, so that's kind of refreshing for a repair shop.
Hey, Rob, Vince, your fire department approval?
I.
Existing building, existing access, Vince, I'm not sure, I mean, there's more than enough access to this building from the road and behind it, that's for sure.
I mean, and one of the comments we're going to be making is eventual, what they should be doing is looking, they should, as, the, the, the property to the north is currently up for sale, and as that property gets developed, they And as that property gets developed, they should be requiring shared driveways, cross access, things of all this nature to combine access, which will, and if you remember from the aerial, it goes all the way out to a local road. I don't know if they would do that far of a combined cross access or reverse frontage road, but there is plenty of opportunity for additional access for fire, emergency response vehicles. Okay, so as you can see that not much landscaping in front, it's just a grass area. There is some landscaping in the southern portion of property, this is just a 3D kind of aerial. So you can see there's no sidewalk there, but we would act, this is going to be the curb, is the existing curb cut that's going to be upgraded. That's the current state of the building. So it'd be nice to have some street trees and also set aside for sidewalk at this location for future development of sidewalk. So require modifications, you've heard me saying before, long term, they should be looking for a combined or shared access, particularly to the north with the adjacent property and looking at cross access potential for that whole strip up to the local road. And that's long-term lighting details, don't have those, they should be all full cutoff. Lighting level should be established, dark sky compliant, sidewalk set aside like I mentioned, and also the landscaping, street trees lawn front.
Okay. Oh, Shep.
And as Frank always reminds me, they should be native species.
Motion to approve recommendations of the board. Vivian.
Thank you, Vivian, is there a second?
Scott McCarthy, second.
Thank you, Scott. Any further discussion?
How about signage?
Signage is actually okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. Town of Rochester. Any recusals?
Mike Baden.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, so. This is a comprehensive plan update. But what we're seeing, the elements that are being added to comprehensive plan are three different reports, even they resources report, as I spelled it, the historic resources report reconnaissance survey, which is done 2008, the OSI, which we saw 2016, and natural heritage plan 2018. So we're taking these established reports and actually making them officially planning documents to guide future development or preservation practices for the town. This is actually all preservation practices for historic and ecological and environmental reasons. So just want to congratulate the town on taking this step to make this part of their plan and part of the comprehensive plan so that any zoning changes they make have to be, look at these documents and acknowledge them as part of those zoning changes. So just a motion to approve.
Gio will make that motion.
I can't make a motion.
Scott McCarthy, second.
All right, Gio and Scott, thank you. Any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. Town of Rochester.
All right, two more to go.
Mike, I'm not recused on this one.
Okay, this is Sleeping Giant Ice Cream, this is just, this is in Carhonson, just at the town of Worsing border. This is a former florist shop and it's being converted for use for a seasonal ice cream store with outdoor seating and pickup window. And it'll be, they're knocking down the existing greenhouse to provide additional parking. Let me just do the aerial real quick. That's not it. That might be it. That's it. Okay, so I'll zoom out a little bit, so you can see there's a town boundary in brown there, there's a Dar General.
This is just as you go into Carhonson, right?
Right.
On the east side, you go into Carhonson, okay.
On the hill, Dennis, just a little Pascato Soto body.
Right, here's the. Here's your project right here. This greenhouse is going away, will be providing additional parking spaces. Okay. So the, the site plans we have are pretty rough, they're basically sketches. But what's, while they're, so the issues with it is mostly one of the internal access and the backing moments, the alignment of the parking spaces and the ability to get, once you get in, getting out, especially if they're angled like that, might propose to be a problem, so you have to do quite a significant turnaround and to get out of those spaces. So we would make a required bond that they take a closer look at this for vacuum movements, internal circulation, and making sure that emergency responders still have adequate access to turn around and as well as delivery trucks. So just basically a little look at the internal circulation. Lighting is a comment as well. What else do we have? And signage is the other comment on it, we don't have signage details, but those are the three required modifications on this.
Vince moves to support staff.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Rox.
Any discuss, further discussion? Carry none. I have a motion in a second, all those opposed to staff's comment? Any abstentions? Okay. Moving along, Rob. Town of Rosendale, any recusals?
Jer.
Thanks, Jer.
Okay, this is a proposal to renovate an existing dwelling and make it a mixed use. Structure will be an acupuncture clinic on the first floor, apartment on the second. Already checked with NIZA on this, the curb cut, they're just doing maintenance on the curb cuts, they don't need any additional permits. Let's see. Let me just do a. I'm in the wrong referral. So this is the site plan here, and let me just quickly show you where the aerial is, so you get a sense where this is. Here we are. So it's this parcel.
Right there, Rob.
Right in here.
Yeah.
And clear out, just so you, let me give you a little context here, so you know where that is. So Arctic snow over in there, funeral home to north is is a self-storage facility, so you might be familiar with this area. Let me go back to the presentation. So that's the site plan, so you have access to the state route, they'll be cleaning it up, park, customer parking's in front. You got about 11 foot, just under 11 feet lane back here, this is for a practitioner parking residence. There's dark sky compliant lighting, landscaping. That's what it currently looks like. That's what's proposed, so staff recommends no county impact on this.
Motion to approve staff comments. Who moved it? Sorry, Mike Baden.
Mike moved it, I have a second.
Hold your second.
Thank you, John.
I thought you were asleep.
We have a motion in a second, all those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. Town of Sorgades. Any recusals?
Yes, Slavety.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, so this is up on King's Highway. Existing industrial operation. On King's Highway, this building right here, Fear Brothers. And proposing to support or use a 12,000 square foot pre-fabricated steel building along the King's Highway front. It's going to be located about in here with a new connector road from there.
Your connector, what's happening to the existing?
Nothing's happening to the existing.
So it's going to be right alongside each other?
You'll, you'll see.
No, 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 it's a connect internal.
Let me bring up the slide.
Oh, internal, okay.
Yeah, it's all internal.
Okay.
So here you go, here's existing conditions. And there you have the proposed building, so you'll have a new.
Got a better picture.
Right there, and also they'll continue the, what it looks like, they look like maples, the, the comment here is the same as existing. They look like maples from the road or red maples from the road. We'd ask them to specifically state the, what trees they're planting there rather than say same as existing. And that, and also while this site has full cutoff dark sky compliant lighting, we note that the existing building does not. So they should upgrade existing lighting on the existing buildings to be consistent with that. So those are your two required modifications.
Rob, can we put a comment in there pretty much in essence congratulating the town for developing the King's Highway corridor further? I mean, it's badly needed down there, A, and B, it's, I mean, that's what I would say. I mean, that, that corridor has been needing more development for quite some time, so to congratulate the town to further develop that stress there.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion, Scott McCarthy.
I'll second.
I mean, I don't know if we can put. Yeah, we'll, we'll edit it.
We'll edit it, Vince.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those opposed? All, any abstentions? All right, Village of Sorgades, any recusals?
Nope.
Those authorities, existing ambulance company at One Main Street, which you can see here, you have an existing building, they're putting an additional bay there. No county impact on that.
Rob?
Yeah.
Before we know county impact, can we take a look at the site plan for this?
Sure, this is an area variance, by the way.
Oh, it's an area variance?
This is an area variance.
Site, site plan's coming back?
Yeah.
Right.
All right, the only thing I'm a little concerned about is the drainage to that property to the north, Rob. I know I didn't mention it when we reviewed it, but I thought about it and I said, you know? All right, I'm fine.
Well, hang on.
Vince moves it.
Okay, we'll pick it up on the site plan, Dennis. Okay, I have a motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Roxanne, a second?
Hold your second.
There you go. Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried.
That's all we got.
Okay. Anything else before the board tonight?
Dennis, Mike Baden, just a quick question for you, could you send the language that the county prefers for the short-term rental law, the requesting that they sign up with the county?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That would be helpful.
Dennis, I have a quick question, that class you're talking about, it's going to be seven o'clock and whenever, can you send that out to us?
The, the, should go out, we should have a save the date going out tomorrow, and then we'll send a formal invitation after that.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And like I said, registration is already online on the planning board page.
What date is it, Rob?
September 30th.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Dennis, my question earlier was the town of Marlborough is currently reviewing short-term rentals too. Do you know, or Rob, maybe any percentage estimates as to what percentage of the towns require owner occupation?
I, I will say that in Ulster County, there's not been a, there's not been a great number of towns that, that basically don't re, that, that have only, that only allow for owner occupied. They treat them differently generally. So what they end up doing is, is they, they allow owner, owner occupied generally in all districts with less concerns about other kinds of things associated with them. And non-owner occupied is generally limited, they either do it two ways, they limit it by district, they limit it by type of, by, by type of building, or what they'll end up doing is they'll limit the number, and some do all three, Woodstock, I think, does all three. And what that means is, is Woodstock basically says, as I recall, they allow non-owner occupied units, but they're limited to those that were in existence at the time of the passage of the statute. And then they set a number on them. And what we've said to communities with respect, if you're going to allow non-owner occupied units, you should set a number, you should cap them, A, and B is you should take that cap and use it as a, as an impetus to essentially get an additional housing built. So we'll allow an increase in the number of non-owner occupied units as we add units, as we add housing stock to the town. So that effectively you're, you're, you're sort of balancing the, the non-owner occupied from the, to adding housing stock. I will tell you that in general, on an urban areas, there's been a, an absolute lockdown in a lot of urban areas for non-owner occupied. They've just said no.
Dennis, do you, do you know if that, the, the establishing number for, for your municipality, do you know if that has withstood a court challenge yet? Because I will tell you, we, we discussed it and we were concerned that unless we could come up with a rational reasoning behind what the number was, that we would be opening the door for court challenge, so.
Well, the, from my perspective is, is that, a couple of things, Mike, I mean, I have, I, I don't, I, I don't know why you would be opening up the court challenge, I, I would think that you could simply set the number of, you file them as non, non-conforming uses within an existing, you know, within, you have to file with an X amount of time as a non-conforming use and then, and then you would be allowed to continue that use. That's, that's what I would say.
So you're saying only ones in existence, not.
Well, that's one way to avoid a court challenge for sure.
Right, okay.
You would allow them to be transferred, you could basically say that's what we're going to do and, and we're going to allow that if, if somebody decides that they don't want to do it anymore, you can sort of buy them out. And that's, I mean, the states did this for, you know, beer distributors, they only issued so many licenses. I mean, the, I don't know, I, I would, that's the first way to do it. The second way to do it is to think about them in, in terms of separation. Because clearly, I mean, the, the idea of special permits and separations between special permits, that's, that's what's the test of time on, on a number of different uses. And the, and the argument here is you don't want dark neighborhoods. So you want to basically space them out, so you don't want a whole neighborhood to go dark because nobody's home and everybody's renting.
Got it, thank you.
Quick question before we adjourn, is that, do we plan on doing these Zoom meetings until the end of the year?
It depends, Vince, if, if the executive order is not extended, then we're, we, we won't be doing Zoom meetings. If the executive order is extended, my sense would be is, is that if the board wants to meet and we're, and we're permitted by the regulations, we certainly can. But Zoom meetings have not proven to be, I, I would think Zoom meetings have not proven to be problematic for us.
No, I, I'm not saying they're a problem, I'm just asking if we're going to continue to the end of the year.
I, I can't answer that question until the governor answers whether or not he's going to extend the executive order.
Dennis, we would need another venue though, because everybody would have to be six feet apart. And there's no way we could see.
We would probably end up, we'd probably end up in the, in the chambers.
There's even thinking that this could become a permanent thing in some form in the laws too, so nobody, there's more attendees in these meetings.
Well, I, I think, and that's, that's the discussion with respect to how we manage the meeting, not necessarily how the meeting's attended. My sense would be is, is that we could manage the meeting to allow people to attend the meeting via Zoom rather than essentially allow board, just board members, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So you could change the way that attendance at the meeting, if you wanted to watch the county planning board meeting, you could attend by Zoom.
Dennis, it's Lisa. Moving until we know what happens on September 4th, or, yeah, September 4th, 4th. Our meeting notices, what happens if they don't extend it? I mean, do you know that?
Well, we would, we would make provisions for the board to meet in accordance with the statute and, and the guidelines.
Because I, you know, we're sending out notices like two weeks out in advance, and now I wonder if we could ever be challenged or.
You know, I mean, I, I, oh, I hear what you're saying, at the local level, you mean?
Yeah. I'm wondering if it doesn't get extended and we're putting notices out, public hearing notices out. There must be some leeway, correct?
I would presume that what you could do is you could allow. I would presume that what you could do is you could allow the public to attend by. You could always allow, let me see if I can understand this. You could always allow the public to attend and comment. Remotely, it's it's where the board would actually have to be.
Right, because I am getting a lot of kickback. Everywhere on visibility, comments, public comment. On the ability to participate. And if somehow it doesn't get extended after September 4th. Then are 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 our meeting notices illegal or, you know what I mean?
No, I think. It's Mike Baden, I I could email you some suggestions about how we're doing our notices that cover us in both ways.
Thank you Mike.
Yep.
Yeah, they they just end up basically stating if if the if if not, then this, right Mike?
Yeah, you state that in accordance with the governor's executive order.
Yep.
And you and you you put it out in, you know, in the Zoom format for the public. And then you can say, or if executive order is suspended.
I haven't seen that, okay, thank you.
We've been, we've been doing, as we go through ours, we've been doing it that way. Your notice, your public hearing notice for a planning board, I don't, unless your local law requires, it doesn't have to go out two weeks in advance either.
Well, what? Well mailed, I mailed them out, the written notices are mailed out, so it has all the information.
So Mike, if you if you could send that that language for your notices to Mary Ann and then we'll send it to the rest of the board.
Get me out Mike.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you everyone.
A motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion Drew.
Thank you.
Hold on here a second.
Thank you all, have a very good, safe Labor Day weekend folks.
Thanks guys.